Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the May 3, 2016 Post Falls City Council meeting. A clerk will notice that all council members are present. And tonight, we have a couple proclamations. First and foremost, so, I would like to publicly welcome Bethany from the Cordillane Press. We have a new reporter covering the beautiful city of Post Falls, so Bethany will be here and hopefully write good things about us. And I told her she can call me at any time unless it's negative, then call Council President Wilhelm, so we got that straight.
She's better looking than Brian, too. Not just saying, he's a friend of mine, but...
That's so politically incorrect.
I know, I'm glad Alan said that one. Ceremonies, the first proclamation is the National Historic Preservation Month. Whereas, local historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighbors, neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability; and whereas, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds; and whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people; and whereas, Post Falls Historical Society and the Jaclyn Arts and Cultural Center are hosting the celebration of Idaho Archaeology and History Month in Post Falls on May 19, 2016, from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Jack, 405 North Williams Street, Post Falls, Idaho; and whereas, historic preservation is supported by the city of Post Falls and the Post Falls Historical Society and the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office and Idaho Historical Society; and whereas, the Post Falls community continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation through ongoing historical and archaeological surveys, the nomination of significant cultural resources to the National Register of Historic Places, the protection of its traditional neighborhoods, the integration of historic elements with redevelopment, and the recognition, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic properties. And now therefore I, Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the city of Post Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as National Preservation Month and call upon the people of Post Falls to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observation, I'm sorry, special observance dated this third day of May?
2016.
2016, this is 15, so we'll need to change that for you, but we will get you a corrected copy. Sorry I didn't look at it before. And the second proclamation is the Economic Development Week. Whereas, the International Economic Development Council celebrated its 90th anniversary in 2016; and whereas, economic development promotes economic well-being and quality of life for communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs to facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base; and whereas, economic development stimulates and incubates enter, oh boy, I was going to pronounce this word, entrepreneurism, entrepreneurism, in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy; and whereas, economic development is engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions; and whereas, economic development attracts and retains high-quality jobs, develops vibrant communities, and improves the quality of life in regions; and whereas, Post Falls uses tools such as the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce, the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency, Idaho Department of Commerce incentives, industrial revenue bonds, and Jobs Plus recruitment to stimulate economic development for new and existing businesses and job creation. And now therefore I, Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the city of Post Falls, do hereby proclaim May 8 through May 14, 2016, as Economic Development Week in Post Falls, dated this third day of May 2016. I knew I was going to have problems with that word. Maybe we could put it phonetically for me so I can, tough ones like that. The next item up is the appointment of Daryl Wilder to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And just so council is aware, we did have an opening, we had a gentleman that applied. I had Counselor Porter sit in, we interviewed, was a good fit. I don't know if you were in on that one or not, Alan, but a good discussion with staff, with the gentleman, after one meeting decided it was something he did not want to do. So Mr. Wilder is a developer, he's a builder, he's been involved in the Post Falls community for many years. He did have an application into us, so tonight, I would like to ask for council confirmation of the appointment of Daryl Wilder to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Ms. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorsten?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we look forward to having Daryl aboard. Announcements. Idaho Gives 2016 is this Thursday, May 5. Idaho Gives is a one-day online giving blitz that is about coming together to support charitable nonprofits. So on May 5, I will be attending the Idaho Gives Strong Breakfast and will compete with Mayor Steve Widmeyer, Mayor Steve Griffiths, and Mayor Steve Roeburg to collect the most cash in a money machine. The mayor with the most cash collected will get to pick one or more charities for the Idaho Central Credit Union donation. I asked him if I needed to change my name, but they said since I have a son named Steve that they would accept me as I was, so I'm trying to figure out the best way to grab the most money. I don't know if stick 'em is legal, but we're going to figure something out. The Post Falls Food Bank's grand reopening is this Thursday from 5 to 7 p.m. Everyone is invited to the celebration of the new food bank market with ribbon cutting at 5:30 and catering by Fedora Pub and Grill. The annual e-recycle event was last Saturday. We collected several truckloads of electronics. The police department collected several large boxes of unused prescription drugs, and Mountain West Bank providing shredding services. If you didn't make it by, you can pick up the 2016 recycling calendars, reusable insulated grocery bag, and Coin Bank garbage toters at the finance office at City Hall. These three, these free bags and items are provided through a grant from the Post Falls Sanitation Department. And just so you know, I heard several comments from folks who did participate in that, and we're very pleased to see the way in which the city handled, the computers destroyed the hard drives, and they said they were very interested just to sit and watch the way they handled it. So again, thanks to staff for making that all come together. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Ms. Shannon, would you like to present the consent calendar, please?
Item A is minutes from the April 19, 2016, city council meeting. Item B is payables, April 12 through April 25, 2016. Item C is award of the 2016 Asphalt Chip Seal and Fog Seal Placement Contract to Poe Asphalt. Item D is veneer zone change findings affect and conclusions. And item E is 7th Avenue Capacity and Safety Project Contract Document Approval.
I have one quick question, I don't need a long explanation, but I want to ensure that, I know with the issue we had with the chip seal a few years ago, it's been resolved, and I would assume that we're going to hold contractors the same standard that we've implemented?
That's correct, we do have a consulting company that provides oversight during that project for quality assurance.
Good, thank you very much. Any questions on consent calendar? Ms. Shannon, entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
On items A, B, C, and E, and I abstain from item D.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorsten?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Tonight, we have no public hearings. Next up is unfinished business, and it's the economic development policy. Assistant Administrator Underwood's going to present.
Thank you. Tonight, you have before you the final draft of the economic development policy. This has been through staff, it also was presented to council about a year ago. Any commentary that you might have tonight, changes on the policy that you would like to see? I've gotten a few changes in just some of the words that were not necessarily phonetically correct. And what it's going to do for the city is allows us to have a policy stating how we will use incentives that the state provides for companies who are looking to locate in the city of Post Falls. When site selectors are going around and they're looking for locations, that's one of the things they look for on the economic development website, is whether or not a city has a policy that will state what your program allows for incentives and how the city will interact on those incentives. A lot of the incentives through the state do require the city to be the recipient of the grants, like on a community development block grant. So the company would work through the city to apply for a community development block grant, for an example. Also, we have used the industrial revenue bonds, it's one of the things I think has only been used about a dozen times in the state of Idaho, and ATC used that to build their facility out on the edge of town there.
Oh, I'm sorry, was it ATC? I was thinking of sending out the...
Yeah, so, we do have programs like that, and we have those listed out, and we talk about what our participation will be with those programs. And we can take any comments that you might have at this time.
I'd just like to comment, one of the things I liked in reading it is that there are incentives out there, but the recipients of those incentives will be held to a standard, they, it's not free money.
Correct.
There are things that have to be done in order for them to qualify, and again, I thought it was well-written, it was not overly specific to create a lot of confusion, but I think it provided some excellent guidelines, and I think it's a good step, so I appreciate the time and effort that staff's put in on that.
Thank you.
Any comments?
I would just echo that, that one of the criticisms I hear of government in general is that when somebody's trying to start a business or get money for a business, they just don't really know what to do, what's available, what is expected of them. And when they don't know, that creates more uncertainty than, than even a complicated system that at least is spelled out. And so this, I thought that a really good job is spelling out what's available, what's required of them, so just like you said, I think this will help recruitment efforts actually, just by making everything very transparent, very clear, here's what you can do, can't do, and I appreciate the effort, I think it's going to pay off.
Thank you, and this has been reviewed also by Jobs Plus, just to let you know, so we did run it by some of the other partners. We sent it over to Urban Renewal and to the Chamber and the different partners that are listed in here. I also sent it out to Cordillane, Hayden, Rathdurm, and I'm trying to remember who the other individual was, I don't remember right now, but it did go out to partners that had commentary for us, too.
I just appreciated the fact that it wasn't just focused on bringing new business to Post Falls, but really helping the businesses that are here now. I think that's a, an area where we can, you know, help those companies get bigger and broader, and that's just as important as bringing new people in, so I thought it was really well-written.
Yes?
Very well put together, I like the whole thing. I mean, it's so plain and simple, but yet it delineates the duties of both the city and the developer, and I think it's, again, an excellent resource. It lays out what they have access to and what they don't, I love it.
Do you need action from us today?
No, we'll bring it back to the next meeting with a resolution for adoption.
And if anyone has further comments, suggestions, feel free to contact Shelley.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, citizens issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If you care to speak, come on up, we'll state your name for the record, we'll give you five minutes to talk. Come on up, Bob.
A couple weeks ago, I kind of got myself into a predicament there at my house, and my wife panicked a little bit, and she ended up calling 911. Well, I couldn't believe it, but suddenly I had a couple of paramedics there and an officer from the Post Falls PD, and I mean, they responded extremely fast, they were great, they were very professional, very helpful. I wish I'd have been in a condition to actually take down some names at the time, but I just wanted to say thank you to the Post Falls PD, thank you to the fire department, thank you to all of you, because we, we had a problem going on, and they dealt with it perfectly, and I am very appreciative of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, thanks for your kind words, and knock it off, would you? Take care of yourself. You'll miss seeing you around here. Anyone else wishing to, come on up?
I'm Ted Freddykind, I'm the new president of the Historical Society here in Post Falls. In 1988, the Post Falls Historical Society was incorporated, and it has been our mission ever since to preserve and share the history of Post Falls and the surrounding area. For a number of years, we collected and displayed our stories and artifacts in temporary quarters around town, then in 19, or 2009, we moved into the old Chapin Drugstore building. Many of you remember it as the police station, and some of you probably remember Parks and Rec being there. We want to thank the city for allowing us to use this building. The building built in 1923 is one of the last of the early buildings from the old town center that's still surviving and intact, and its historical significance, I can't even talk either, its historical significance immediately sets the tone for our tours and our presentations. Keeping the museum active is dependent on the core of people who volunteer their time and efforts in devising fundraising events to ensure that our utilities and running costs are paid. Some of the board members are here with me, and I'd kind of like to introduce them to you now. Would you stand as I call your name? Kim Brown. Kim Brown is our current secretary, she's actually, I think, the only charter member of the group that's actually on the board at this time, and she was president in 1991, 1994, and 2004. Carol Yost. Carol is our current treasurer, and she was the president in 2014 and 2015. For any of you who would like to join our Historical Society, the membership fees are $20 a year for an individual, or $30 a year for a family, which is the husband, wife, and children at home, $75 a year for a business, and $100 a year for contributors. The membership entitles you to free entrance into the museum anytime we're open, and a quarterly newsletter. And the business and contributor memberships have their business names listed as our supporters, and we have sign-up sheets at the museum if you ever want to come by and check them out. We have several vacancies also on our board. If any of you might be interested, then we can always use more volunteers in the museum. The shifts in the museum are, can be as small as like a couple of hours, we need people to give tours and to introduce people, and we get a lot of people from out of town, and tell them a little bit about our town. And we've got things written on most of the wa, by, on most of the walls, by most of the pictures and stuffs, which help you, would help you out in telling a little bit of the history of Post Falls. You'd be amazed how therapeutic it is to have a nostalgia fix in our 50's room. I get in there and I feel like I'm a teenager again. Okay, well, while some of our exhibits, like our Kildale canoe, the Allen Racetrack items, the military room, the classroom, and our 50's room are always on display, there are smaller items that are rotated to create interest with each visit. To excite the younger visitors, right now, we have a new display called Toys and Entertainment. In this, we have a stereoscope, which is a 3D viewer that was invented clear back in the mid 1800's. Our, the version we have was refined by Oliver Wendell Holmes back in the late 1800's and was popular until 1939. It belonged to my grandparents, and I remember it as a little kid, and it's very, it's amazing to know that something like this was built before cameras were even invented, and it's something interesting to see. We also have in there a display of Matchbox Car Collection, which dates back to like 1947, and we have Jack's, Ball and Jack's, which is actually dates back to before the Bible times. Our museum is open to the public from mid-April to the end of October. The hours are Wednesday through Saturday, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., and with more volunteers, we could span those hours and maybe have Mondays and Tuesdays open, too. Post Falls is a growing and progressive community, and I feel that the museum is an important contributing factor in that growth. Remember, it's hard to know where you're going if you don't remember where you've been or don't even know. I invite you to visit us at any time, but we have also set aside the evening of Tuesday, May 10, from 5 to 7, that's a week from tonight, at the community to host a get acquainted party for city officials and employees, and I hope we'll see you then. Oh, and if any of you are really smart with smartphones, if you'd be nice enough to come by on Friday or Saturday when I'm working and give me some pointers, I just got a new one, I found out I'm not smart enough to run it. This morning, while shaving, an Amber Alert came across on it, I almost cut my throat. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for what you do, and ladies, for what you have done as well. Thank you.
My name is Kim Brown, I'm from Post Falls, and I'm a member of the Post Falls Historical Society. I'd just like to thank Ted for giving you an overview, but I want to challenge you here tonight, first of all, I want to thank you, because as I look back on Post Falls and its historic preservation, this month is very special. It's a 50-year national celebration, and in our town, we have, in this little corridor, I call it the T-bone of Post Falls, extending over to the city's park system, running down to the Jack, and then heading back to the river, and you know it's in the water, that's the reason this town is here, because of the water. There is an ideal little T-bone for a walking tour. I'm all about neighborhoods also and connecting people, because if we don't invite people back to the old neighborhood, they think everything is happening on I-90. But when we think about economic development, you're sitting on a little goldmine with history as part of it. You have easy access off of I-90 to bring people in. The traveling public, and these are statistics that you can get nationally or at the Idaho State Historical Society, one quarter of the traveling public pops into towns to see what makes the town tick, why is it here, and what do we have here to celebrate? We have so much here that is unique. For one thing, you've got those wonderful parks. Now, there was a time when Old Treaty Rock wasn't even listed on the National Historic Register, and I will tell you, for those that know how much getting those par, those sites on, none of it came out of budget for the city of Post Falls. Because of the efforts of the citizenry of this town, they were so interested in seeing, making sure that we reached a pinnacle of national credentials in order to get our places on, we have Treaty Rock, we have the Corbin Ditch, we have the Washington Water Power Bridges, we have the Samuel and Anne Young Home, and we have the Jack, all of them in this little corridor. But just think about it, we've got more sitting around there, and really, the town's oldest grocery is still over there veneered. We have so much here in our little town, and the big thing about it is, as I've lived here, Post Falls has grown, its change has grown to be the 10th largest city in Idaho, and isn't that something to celebrate? But you know, just like all of you sitting here, let's see, you were born, but you're, you've evolved quite a lot in your lifetimes, but I bet you remember your parents, I remember your early roots, and I imagine that the foundation that they laid for you is something that you celebrate and is so, so much a core of your being. So where am I going with all this? Well, I'm here to challenge our city leaders here. Why? Because our Historical Society in 1988 would have died on the vine without our mayor at that time, Kent Helmer, without our city councilmen, men like George Politis, without former mayors like Cecil Meyer, Don Camps. If we had not had these spark plugs, these men that cared about the story of this town, we would not have an Historical Society at this, at this moment. We had, oh, we had, of course, we had Franny Wilhelm, who was one of our charter members. Why is this important? We had 100 charter members in 1988, and I'm sad to say that, you know, what happens with all of us, we come and we go. And what do we need? We need more, we need more members, and we need that energy and that invitation back to our citizens. This history doesn't belong to the Historical Society, it doesn't belong to the city, it belongs to our citizens, it belongs to our children as an inspiration. And as Ted said, if you don't know anything about your past, how can you appreciate what you have here today? But as far as the cheerleaders of the town, your, your Historical Society, people interested in history, herald the hard work that sometimes are maybe locked away over in Shannon's office in the records of the city of Post Falls, and it's those historians that go in and pull that stuff out, bring it out, and try to share it. So it's really a very cooperative effort, and so I would encourage all of you, and I want to thank you tonight for your longtime support of the Historical Society's efforts for the designation of Post Falls to be an Idaho City Heritage Town. We have a little museum, but we've got a great story. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Tom?
Tom only gets three minutes, right?
I won't need that long. My name is Tom Leon, I'm the executive director of the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency, and after listening to these two nice people, I feel like maybe I should be over in the Historical Society in the museum, because I've been around since the mid-'40's, so that dates me a little bit. Because I've been around that long, and I've been the director of the Urban Renewal Agency for a little over seven and a half years, I find it necessary on my part, my decision, to tender my resignation and my notice that, to the agency, that I'm going to retire, and my family is saying, way to go, Tom, because they're all retired, and I'm jealous. So, effective June 10, just wanted to make a formal announcement to the council and the mayor. I really appreciate all the support that you've given me and the agency in the last several years, it's been critical. City staff, I follow the departments and the staff, I really appreciate your support and patience. We've gone through a lot on projects, and I think it's really important to maintain that synergy between the agency, the staff, the commissioners, the council, and staff over here. We've accomplished a lot, and I'm proud of that, so I say thank you very much, and adieu. I'll be around for another few weeks, we'll do a transition of staff, and I will be around after that. Anything really falls down, give me a call. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate your time.
I'm jealous.
You're a long way to go.
Yeah, I do.
We, we had our month, our monthly three-on-three meeting with the city and Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency this morning, and I mentioned then, I'll mention it again, urban renewal in Post Falls is held up to be the standard of what urban renewal should do. You know, very seldom do you see, you're going to get people who have concerns, complaints, et cetera, but when there's criticisms leveled, I can't remember a time when it was Post Falls who was the recipient of that criticism. I think we've, we as a city, the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency has done it right, so thanks, Tom, for your part in making it effective and, and thought of as highly as it is, so thanks, and happy retirement. Anyone else? Seeing none? New business, tonight we have none. We do have one ordinance, and that is on the veneer zone change.
Move to approve the ordinance, veneer zone change.
Second.
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 Whoops.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of Idaho providing for a change in zoning classification for land described in Section 1 of the ordinance from heavy industrial to community commercial services and high-density multifamily residential, providing for amendment of the official zoning map to reflect the change, providing that all prior zones applicable to the lands described in Section 1 are hereby superseded and providing an effective date.
Before we vote, Linda, let's finish up that. I'm sure you're...
My cold pills.
Your cold pills. I'm sure your motion was to, by title only, will enter suspension of the rules.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor.
And we had a motion and a second. Shannon, would you take a roll on that piece of it, please?
Malloy?
Abstain.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Wilson has already read the ordinance. Now we entertain the next motion.
Move to approve the ordinance, veneer zone change, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item up is administrative staff reports.
We have none tonight, sir.
Thank you. Mayor comments? Just two things I wanted to mention. Yesterday, Councilors Henderson, Thorson, and myself were out at the New Beginnings grand opening of the Post Falls location. If you're familiar, if, well, if you are or are not familiar with New Beginnings, Army Specialist Nicholas Newby was killed, I believe it was in Iraq, several years ago, and his mother, Teresa Hart, was looking for a way to honor his memory and take care of other veterans, and they created an organization that has grown leaps and bounds. They provide goods, they provide, you know, household goods, clothing, whatever veterans need. They outgrew their space. It's all volunteer. They outgrew their space. And thanks to the generosity of our philanthropic family, the Jacklins, they were able to secure a location out in the research park, Jacklin Land out there. And I had a, I don't know, a couple hundred people, probably, yesterday.
Oh, more than that.
Out in the sun, listening to folks talk, and tremendous organization. They provide tremendous service to people who are definitely worthy of the services. And so I want to thank Teresa and her organization, New Beginnings, for all they've done. I want to thank the Jacklins and all those who have continued to contribute to make it such an effective organization.
And I might just add that any veteran, there's no charge to any veteran for anything that they want at New Beginnings. It's just free to them.
Yeah, it's phenomenal organization, so again, great event. And then today, I had the opportunity to join our neighbors to the east, City Coeur d'Alene, Mayor's Widmire, and then Mayor Griffith from Hayden, for the ribbon cutting, for the expansion of Alliance Data in Coeur d'Alene. And economic development policy, we talk about collaborative efforts. And Alliance Data appreciates that. And one of the things that they do support to a large degree is United Way, the Post Falls Food Bank. We have residents from Post Falls, Hayden, Coeur d'Alene, and other places that work there. And I was talking with Mayor Widmire as we walked in. Two years ago, we were there for the original ribbon cutting. I think they had four employees. They were doing a job fair. They're now up to 428 employees. They are now moving into their second building, and they need in excess of 200 more employees. So again, just a huge success story for our area. It's not in city of Post Falls, but it's in our area, and we all benefit from that. Their generosity, I think the local group contributed in excess of $15,000 to United Way. On a national level, Alliance Data contributed in excess of $2 million last year to United Way. They've also donated to Family Promise, so again, wonderful citizen to have in our community, and I appreciate the opportunity to participate in their ribbon cutting for their expansion. Look forward to more things to come. They keep talking about how they're going to need more room, so I suggested the Kimbo Building, because the way they're going, they may need that much room, so.
Perfect.
Always outselling the city.
Perfect.
Any other comments from the council?
I just wanted to mention that Counselor Wilhelm and Counselor Wolf and myself had the pleasure of, and we didn't have a quorum, so it was okay, but we participated in the mock interviews, practice interviews, with some of the young women who are going to participate in Distinguished Young Women of Post Falls Scholarship Program on Saturday night at 7:00 p.m. at West Ridge Elementary. And I will tell you, if you have any doubts, you know, we always talk about that generation, these were just really, really stellar young people. So it did give some of us older folks faith. Allen wanted to adopt at least one of them. But yeah, so it's definitely would be a great program, Bring the Family, 7:00 p.m. West Ridge Elementary, and they will be selecting the Distinguished Young Woman of Post Falls.
Thank you. Allen?
I had a question, a follow-up question for Captain Knight. Last meeting, we had a couple gentlemen here concerned about some speeding in their area. Any update on that? Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
I'm not totally familiar with what you're talking about. I know there's a couple areas that our traffic team was out hitting this week.
Bill Armstrong.
It was 12.
12th Street. Armstrong Jr., yeah, senior now up on Bill Armstrong Jr.'s location. The first day out there, we sent an officer out, and he wrote over 10 citations in about six hours. So there was a speeding problem up there, and hopefully we rectify that. But we put that in place for a full week. We're going to run that for a week, have some overtime shifts, allow some traffic education to go on, and hopefully that'll rectify that position.
And our street superintendent, Jim Porter, is pulling the data off those traffic signs that went up on 12th Street, and the police department and our engineering department will be meeting and discussing the data from those. And that's coming back to the next meeting. We have it on the agenda for the next meeting, the update on those, on the actual traffic data.
Thanks, Captain. And you know, speaking of that, we had a tragedy in Post Falls, actually in the county in Post Falls last night. And it just, you know, I ask people, watch when you drive, and as parents, make sure your kids do in fact follow, follow the rules. You know, it was a very unfortunate tragedy, and it's not that really, in my opinion, anybody did anything wrong, but kids are kids, and we have to watch out for that, so.
Bicycle.
Bicycle, yeah. So again, Captain, thanks for your officers for patrolling that, because I know Mr. Armstrong, that was one of his big concerns. So we appreciate your efforts there. And again, our thoughts and prayers with families of both the young man who was killed and the driver who hit him, so. Any other comments?
I just have one other. As Kerry said, we had the opportunity to interview these young ladies last night. One of the questions we asked was, you know, what would you change about Post Falls? And for the most part, they were very happy with the way Post Falls is. And sitting here tonight, hearing our older citizens, if you will, that have put in countless hours to make Post Falls the place that it is, I'd just like to personally thank you all, Bob, Kim, I'm sorry, I can't remember the gentleman.
Ted.
Ted, and Tom especially. This is what makes Post Falls what it is, and that's that people get involved, and really, really appreciate that. And those 16, 17-year-old girls appreciate it as well, so thanks again.
We do not need an executive session tonight. The next motion is?
Adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.